You're good to go. Sorry for the half-hearted ring there. At nine thirty, I'll call the meeting to order. We do have a long agenda today, being of a sort of six weeks of long meetings, I expect. So I'm going to encourage us not to stifle debate, but to be effective and efficient in our comments and questions and better get to business. So Deputy Warden Peterson.
Thank you, Warden. Moved by Peterson, seconded by Counselor Mayberry, resolved that agenda be approved.
Is there any discussion? All's in favor? Opposed? That is carried. And Deputy Warden Peterson.
Thank you. Moved by Peterson, seconded by Counselor Mayberry, resolved that motion to adjourn the council meeting of November thirteenth, twenty twenty-four be extended to two thirty P. M.
Is there any discussion? All's in favor? Opposed? That is carried. Are there, having adopted the agenda, are there any disclosures of community interest and the general nature thereof? Not seeing any. Adoption minutes of the previous meetings. Counselor Mayberry.
Thank you, Warden. Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Tate, resolved that the council minutes of October twenty-third, twenty twenty-four be adopted.
Is there any discussion? All's in favor? Opposed? That is carried. And Counselor Mayberry.
Thank you, Warden. Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Petrie, resolved that the minutes of the homeless response strategy workshop dated October twenty-third, twenty twenty-four be adopted.
Is there any discussion? All's in favor? Opposed? That is carried. No public meetings. Item six, delegations, presentations, and consideration thereof. Six point one, Ben Lampkin. Ben, I would invite you up to the podium for your delegation on a proposal to address homelessness in Ingersoll. Over on this side.
Good morning. Salutations, esteemed officials, decision-makers, and visionaries. My name is Ben Lampkin. I come to you from Ingersoll. I represent no organization. The population of Ingersoll sits at roughly thirteen thousand, six hundred and ninety-three people in twenty twenty-one, and Oxford has around one hundred and twenty-one thousand of the same year. We'll call Ingersoll approximately ten percent of the population of Oxford. According to Hard FM this morning, I read that we are talking about a budget of four hundred and twenty-two million dollars drafted for twenty twenty-five here in the county, with two hundred and ninety-one million dollars going towards operations and one hundred and thirty-one million on a capital plan. It appears I've timed my visit perfectly because the amount I'm asking for here today represents less than one percent. According to what a little birdie has told me, we have roughly three million dollars in the county budget to address some of the problems that I've identified. At Ingersoll Council, decision-makers have unanimously supported my delegation last month regarding attainable housing in Ingersoll. That is, they recognize that we have a need in Ingersoll that is not being met. Our need is being echoed here where the funds are directed. I know that the mayor of Ingersoll, Mr. Brian Petrie, brought forward the council's motion here last meeting. So depending on your definition of homelessness and depending on the day, I would personally tell you that in Ingersoll, we have a population of roughly ten to thirty people. Why am I here? Because I can be. I have eyes. I have a voice. I have friends that live by the tracks and friends that live by the river. My ask is that the county staff, please pay due attention to what's going on in Ingersoll. Please come and take a visit in Ingersoll. Our situation is not exceptional. My ask is that we all take a look and become engaged. This is not a problem specific to Ingersoll. I feel like the conversations are beginning to happen. I know they are happening. I want to ask for your continued support when the ideas come forward for Ingersoll because we need help in Ingersoll. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions for the delegation from council? Counselor Mayberry.
Well, I guess, first of all, Ben, thanks for being here and raising the issue. I would agree with you that we have problems everywhere with housing and homelessness. I'm just curious, from your perspective as a citizen of a community that's concerned, what would be your vision or understanding of the way forward as far as housing? Like, what do you see as an option, a viable option for the challenges, for example, that Ingersoll's facing?
Thank you for the question, Counselor Mayberry. So I don't have the answer. I'm having conversations with people. One of the ideas that has been floated in front of me is a transitional housing type of model. There's not an easy solution. There isn't a solution. It's a multifaceted problem. And I think it comes with a collective vision of people that have resources with land and money and real estate and medical professionals. Somewhere in there, you'll find your answer. And the ideas, we're not on an island in Ingersoll. The ideas of what's happening, it's happening in other communities without just dropping a list of names of communities. Other communities are trying ideas. And so my effort here today is to say that we need to try, and we need to try something in Ingersoll. We've got something off the ground in Woodstock. There are things off the ground in Tilsenberg. We just can't continue to bat ideas around. So whether it's attainable housing that's transitional or some sort of warming center for the winter, the winter is on the doorstep right now. So I hope that answers your question a little bit.
Followed. So yes, it answers a question, but it isn't the answer, right? There isn't a solution, I guess. And I think that's one of the challenges, that the complexity of the issue is such that, well, people, even some of us on council, want simple solutions. There aren't any. And that's why we have a whole lot of hope that Rebecca has a whole lot of really good answers, and we look forward to seeing them. I appreciate you being here, I really do, because I think homelessness and housing should be a core responsibility for us, and I would like to see the other levels of government step up. Thank you.
Any other questions for the delegation? One for me, Ben. I mean, you and I have talked about this before in general terms, and I fully agree that, you know, we're trying, we collectively, right? But here in this room, Oxford County's trying. But what do you think is the path forward for acceptance for your community in Ingersoll for, you know, anything that we do to try and address this, right? Because it's frequently a challenge when we try to do a thing to say, okay, status quo is not great. We want something different. Then we go to do something different, and people say, yeah, no, not that or not that. I mean, how do you, and I'm not asking you to solve that problem for us, similar to Counselor Mayberry, but at the same time, you know, you're a resident of that community, you're here to talk to us about how to advance the issue, and I'm sort of saying, how do we actually advance that towards doing something different than what we do today and getting sort of a general level of acceptance in a community?
So I asked, thank you for the question, Warden Ryan. I asked council last night in Ingersoll to look at the possibility of designating land in Ingersoll. So when the ideas and money comes forward, we have a spot. We have old land in Ingersoll that sits vacant with different types of zoning on it, and then we have new lands in Ingersoll as well. NIMBYism, not in my backyard attitudes permeate everywhere. It isn't going to be any different in Ingersoll, but we can't continue just to ignore that things are going on and focus our dollars on cleanup efforts rather than actually offering some sort of help to people. So whether it is designation of lands or requests for proposals, it's bringing ideas together and having the conversations to get started and allowing people, if they have opposition, to some ideas, the voice early on in the process, but really, there's an urgent need. Winter is right upon us. It was minus two last night, I believe, and there's people living on the river, living under the bridge, and living on the tracks in Ingersoll.
Thank you. Any other questions for the delegation from council? Not seeing any. Thanks.
Thank you for your time.
So the mover for this was going to be Counselor Petrie. Can I ask Counselor Mayberry?
Moved by Mayberry, seconded by Palmer, resolved that information provided in delegation six point one on the open meeting agenda of November thirteenth, twenty twenty-four be received.
Is there any discussion? I have a question for staff. Do we, I know we don't have anything in front of us formally in terms of policy or budget proposals or anything like that. I'm assuming that staff are aware of the situation in Ingersoll?
To the Warden, we have been in discussions with the town of Ingersoll regarding this, and we are looking at really some short and long-term options. And I just want to make it known that council did approve two transitional homes in Ingersoll not too long ago, so we are also working on that as well. So there certainly are some things in the works. It's just, as with these type of concerns, these things can't happen fast enough, so we are working.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All's in favor? Opposed? That is carried. And consideration of correspondence, Counselor Tate.
Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Palmer, resolved that correspondence items seven one to seven three inclusive on the open meeting agenda of November thirteenth, twenty twenty-four be received.
Is there any discussion? Counselor Martin.
Thank you, Mayor Atchuna. I just had a quick question about the communication from Good Roads. Did I say that right? Warden Ryan. The communication on Good Roads. I need a sticker here.
I'm going to get so much a laugh.
It's only to happen twice now. Melissa Abercrombie, you are quite well-connected with Good Roads. I wonder if you could tell me a little bit about what does this rural road safety program mean, and are we already doing some of these things locally in Oxford County? Is it something that we should be considering taking action on, in your opinion?
Through the Warden to Counselor Martin. So I am a part of the Good Roads Board of Directors, and this is something we've been advocating at Queens Park for the last couple of years to create a rural road safety program. So this is another level on top of what we are already doing, and it is sometimes, they are kind of framing it as some of the lower-hanging fruit. It's not to look at like a large intersection reconstruction. It's where could we put a few meters of guide rail that would potentially stop a crash that just happened in this location? So the program that they are advocating for is to do kind of an assessment in all rural roads. We do do some of this, but on a smaller scale. We don't have, unfortunately, the resources to go out and do every road and look for all of these things or have the funds to do all this. So they are asking for this to kind of get this program as a standard and funding for it.
Thank you. Warden Ryan.
Any other discussion? All's in favor? Opposed? That is carried. And item eight point one, community planning. I'm going to give up the chair for this one to the Deputy Warden.
There we go. Reports from the departments, community planning, and it's eight point one point one, CP twenty twenty-four, three two three, phase one, comprehensive review. And if Director Michaels, do you wish to speak to this?
Thank you, Deputy Warden Peterson. The report before council today is just intended to provide an overview of the findings of the first phase of the county's comprehensive review study, which is the updates to the county and area municipal growth forecast. These will form the basis for the second phase of the study, which is intended to be completed early in twenty twenty-five. Megan House from our office has been leading this project, so I'll ask her to come forward and provide a brief overview and introduce the consulting team.
Good morning, Deputy Warden and members of council. The staff report in your agenda package provides an overview of the initial findings of the ongoing study. It's intended to update the county population, housing, employment, growth forecasts for a forty-year period, which is twenty twenty-one to twenty sixty-one, intended to inform the growth planning for the current thirty-year planning period, which is twenty twenty-four to twenty fifty-four. The study commenced earlier this year and is being undertaken by Watson and Associates Economists in association with Dillon Consulting. The draft findings were developed in consultation with a technical advisory committee consisting of county and area municipal staff who provided input and feedback on local trends and initiatives that are ongoing to inform the forecasts. Pending direction from county council, planning staff proposed that the draft forecasts and municipal allocations be circulated to the area municipal councils for their information and be made available to the public as well. The remaining steps in the study include assessment of the existing land supply versus the amount of land anticipated to be needed to accommodate the proposed growth or forecasted growth, including assessment of employment land needs both inside and outside of the fully serviced settlement areas. Once the remaining steps of the project have been completed, a draft report will be prepared for further consideration by area municipal, like, it'll be circulated to the area municipal councils first prior to bringing it, a final draft of the study, to county council for approval. So today, we have Jamie Cook and Vlad Petrov from Watson Associates attending, and they will be presenting the draft findings and will be available for questions following the presentation.
Thank you, Megan. Can everybody hear me okay?
Sorry, I think it's a bit quiet, right? I think you're a bit quiet, actually.
Is that a little bit better? Let's turn my volume up. Can you hear me now?
Can you try a bit louder?
Can you hear me now? Is that better?
Maybe, can you get closer to the mic, maybe?
Try, um, yeah, I can try to. Is that better? Can you hear me now?
There we go.
Yeah, that's better.
Okay, great. Okay. Good morning, and thank you for allowing me to present the draft findings of our growth analysis and urban land needs study to county council today. It's a real pleasure to be able to speak to you. So we're going to walk through a brief overview of the preliminary findings for the phase one and two analysis. So I'll just go to the next slide in terms of the background of the study. So this study is an update to the work that was done in two thousand and twenty as part of the comprehensive review study prepared for the county. Since that time, we've had sweeping changes with respect to provincial policy, planning policy. We've had a pandemic. We've had considerably stronger growth with respect to population, housing, and employment. And there's been a number of other changes that are required and need to update this study. So we're now embarking on this study, and we're finishing the phase two component of this work. So the first, there's three phases of the study that have been ultimately provided. And the first was to provide a county-wide long-term projection for growth out to the year two thousand and sixty-one, as Megan pointed out. And then phase two was to allocate that growth by area municipality, as well as each of the settlement areas within the townships. And then from there, we're then considering a long-term assessment of urban land needs, looking at growth potential within built-up areas of the municipalities, and ultimately the need for lands within designated greenfield areas, potential future urban expansion of both residential and non-residential lands. We'll also be providing a series of policy recommendations with respect to long-term growth management and planning as part of the phase three analysis. Next slide. So just wanted to point out that we are conducting this work within the context of provincial planning policy, and as I mentioned, there's been some significant changes to provincial policy over the last several years. The big change is that we now have an in-force revised provincial planning statement. The two thousand and twenty-four PPS, as it's called, was, is now in force as of October twentieth of this year. It's ultimately designed to integrate two documents, the previous two thousand and twenty PPS and the growth plan into one integrated document. Ultimately, it's designed to be less prescriptive and more outcome-based with respect to land use planning in Ontario. One of the other key changes that's relevant to this discussion today is that the PPS requires that we take a look at Ministry of Finance projections that are prepared on an annual basis by the province as a basis for long-term population growth forecasts. We are allowed to modify those forecasts as appropriate, but we are required to look at those forecasts as a base. Next slide. So I wanted to get into just a bit of a background on what drives population growth and employment growth within a county like Oxford. So this is a schematic, just essentially showing this connection between economics and demographics. And so ultimately, when we're looking at the long-term population growth for a county like Oxford, we're looking at this connection between the economic competitiveness and the potential economic growth outlook of the county, as well as the economic region, which is typically largely measured by the commuter shed of, so where people work, where people come into work, and where people go to work within the county. So that's largely the geographic area, but we've taken a look at the provincial trends and ultimately worked our way down to the economic region of London and then the county. That helps us understand what's happening with respect to labor force trends, employment growth by sector, and then that ultimately helps drive our analysis and assess our analysis for looking at total immigration and net migration to Oxford County. So net migration is really the key driver of population growth in Ontario, in Canada, in Oxford County. I'm going to speak to that as we go through the slide deck today. So once we've assessed that potential for net migration, then that gives us a sense of what the population trends are by age. Those population trends by age are then used to establish household formation needs. So essentially, how many households are we going to be required to accommodate the population that we're anticipating to attract to the county? And then from there, we can allocate that growth of population, housing, and employment by area municipality and by settlement area. So that's the general approach that's taken, and I'll walk through that as we go through the slides today. So on the next slide, on slide six, we'll jump into some of the local trends and regional trends. Wanted to start with a discussion on net migration patterns. And so what this slide shows is it shows net migration patterns by type of migration for Oxford County over the last twenty-plus years. So there's essentially three types of net migration. There's international migration, so migration coming from outside of Canada to Canada and ultimately to the province and to the county. There's interprovincial migration, so people that are coming from other parts of the country, some from other provinces to Oxford, and then people that are coming from other parts of Ontario to Oxford. And what you can see here is that when we look at the migration trends in Oxford, it's really all about interprovincial migration. So it's migration coming from other parts of Ontario to Oxford County. You can see those numbers have been coming up significantly over the past seven years or so, seven or eight years since two thousand and sixteen. And we do anticipate that trend to continue to a large extent over the next thirty to forty years. I'm going to speak to a bit of that as we go through today. When we look at where people are coming from in Ontario, that pie chart to the right shows the origin of interprovincial migration. We can see that about thirty-five percent are coming from the GTA municipalities, places like Keel Region, Toronto, and Hamilton, Carlton. But we're also seeing a lot of migration from the outer ring of the Greater Golden Horseshoe. So about, sorry, it was about twenty percent from the GTA, but thirty-five percent from the outer ring of the GGH. So it's central Ontario, and a lot of that you can see is coming from Waterloo and some other regions of that central Ontario area. You can also see Middlesex County, which would be London and the county also contributing to a large extent of the migration. So this is essentially where the migration's coming from. A lot of the concentration of the migration is within younger people between that twenty to about forty-four years of age, age group, as well as children. So this is essentially the primary concentration by age and location. Next slide. So I also wanted to speak to the economic trends. And so as I mentioned, economics drives a significant, is a significant driver of the overall population outlook that we're looking at and projecting for Oxford over the next thirty to forty years. So this looks at the labor force trends from two thousand and one all the way to current. We have data up to September of two thousand and twenty-four, and we've broken the last couple of years into quarterly installments. But what I wanted to just talk about is just when you can, when you look at the long-term trends, it's important to look at the economic cycles that we've experienced within the London economic region, which includes Oxford County. And you can see, one thing that really pops out is that we had a big economic downturn in two thousand and eight and nine. Many will remember that, the Great Economic Recession, the financial crisis. We saw unemployment activity or unemployment rates peaking during that period, and we had a very gradual recovery from that downturn. You can see that labor force trends were very flat between two thousand and ten and two thousand and fourteen, and then they started to pick up around two thousand and fifteen. As we started to recover from that economic downturn, we saw the unemployment rate also coming down. So what I want to point out is that it wasn't just a COVID phenomenon. We had structural changes in the economy. We saw stabilization in the manufacturing sector. We saw a return to a more, a more appropriate or more positive economic or currency exchange rate, I should say, between the U.S. dollar and the Canadian dollar, which ultimately helped our manufacturing sector. And so we gradually saw the economy recovering during that period, and that's also a period where we started to see higher population growth coming to Oxford County and to other areas of southwestern Ontario. Then we had the COVID recession. We had a very sharp contraction and a very quick recovery. You can see since two thousand and twenty, we've had a very sharp recovery, followed by now some stabilization in labor force growth. But for the last several years, we've seen strong growth in labor. We're now starting to see some gradual softening in that labor force trends, which is important to recognize. Next slide. So in terms of the long-term forecasts, you can see on the next slide that the Ministry of Finance's prepared forecasts over the last several years on an annual basis, and you can see that since two thousand and seventeen, the forecasts have gone up fairly steadily over that time period. We're now looking at a forecast of two hundred and two thousand as prepared by the Ministry of Finance. That's a little bit lower than the two thousand and twenty-four projections, but it is considerably higher than what has been projected in previous years. So similar to that trend that I was just talking about with respect to labor force activity, as we've been moving along over the last decade, as economic activity has strengthened, we've seen an increase in those labor force or these Ministry of Finance projections. There's really, I would say, four things that are driving this increase to Oxford County. One is reduced housing affordability in the GGH, which is putting more pressure on outward migration within places like Oxford County where housing prices are more competitive, particularly for grade-related housing opportunities. particularly for grade related housing opportunities. We've seen that gradual recovery in the economic conditions that I just mentioned in southwestern Ontario and the London Economic Region. We're seeing more increased options for hybrid work and remote work that was accelerated during the COVID pandemic. And we're seeing also the attractiveness of Oxford County and other regions in southwestern Ontario. Given the the attractive in this this area with a blend of large larger urban centers and smaller rural communities that are attractive to those that are coming from the larger urban areas of the Greater Golden Horseshoe. So those are some of the key factors that are driving these trends in our opinion. On the next slide, the population forecast that we prepared over the next forty years is generally in line with the Ministry of Finance projections for two thousand twenty three. We have made some modifications to the the short term period to reflect actual trends that we're experiencing in in Oxford County. This represents a growth rate of about one point four percent. So it's a bit higher than what we've seen historically at about one point one percent. And ultimately, what we're finding is that the growth rates in Oxford County and many of the areas of southwestern Ontario are starting to catch up to some of the other large larger urban centers of Ontario, so those faster growing municipalities traditionally in the Greater Golden Horseshoe are starting to see some moderation in some cases, and we're starting to see some some catch up with those rates in in southwestern Ontario, including including Oxford County. One thing I would note is the forecast does start to bend a little bit in the later half of the forecast period. The population is aging, and that does put some downward pressure on population growth rates as we go forward. Next slide. So this slide just provides a summary of average persons per unit. So when we're looking at the needs for households, we need to understand, well, how many average people do we see occupying a household? And what we what we've been finding is that over the longer term period, PPU's have been coming down. They've been they spiked a little bit in two thousand twenty one during the COVID pandemic. But we do anticipate average occupancy's will come down as the population continues to age. But they're not coming down quite as fast as we anticipated in the previous conference review, and that's because we're seeing more population growth, more immigration from younger age groups, which is putting upward pressure as we see more families and more more growth with those younger age groups coming to to Oxford County. Next slide. So with that forecast of PPU's, we've prepared a housing forecast. Now, this is a summary of the the population forecast in five year increments. We're projecting just over a thousand units a year overall over that forty year period for the county as a whole. Relative to historical trends, that's a fairly significant increase. It's about an eighty five percent increase from the two thousand and six to two thousand and twenty one average, looking at the census. I will note that from two thousand twenty one to twenty six, there was a number of, in that forecast, there was a number of residents that were not picked up in the census as of two thousand twenty one. So during the COVID peak in two thousand twenty and two thousand twenty one, we had a significant amount of building permit activity, about twelve hundred of those permits were not actually reported or reported in the census in two thousand twenty one. So they're now working their way into the population as the as StatsCan looks at what the population is today for Oxford. They're starting to show up now in the data. So that is one reason why those numbers are as high as they are in two thousand twenty one and twenty six. But ultimately, we are projecting much higher rates of of housing over the next forty years for the county based on some of those factors that I explained. When we look at the breakdown of housing by structure type, so the the density of housing, about half of them are projected to be in low density, so single and semi detached households, about twenty two percent in medium households, which are town typically townhomes, and about twenty six percent in high density households. Next slide. So in terms of the employment forecast, this is a summary of the long term projections for employment growth for the county over the next forty years. Similar to population, we are expecting a stronger rate of of employment growth. Much of this employment growth is driven by population related employment, so employment in retail, personal service, personal services, institutional employment as well. But we are expecting about just under half of the employment also to be in the industrial sector. The county does have a strong industrial base, and we're anticipating continued growth in in industrial employment, largely related to manufacturing and logistics, construction and other industrial sectors. Also, about twenty percent of the employment is projected to be in work at home or off site employment, so categories that don't have a fixed place of work, like traveling salesmen or or construction workers. Next slide. So getting into the allocations now by area municipality. On the next slide, just wanted to point out the some of the factors that we've looked at in allocating the growth between each of the area municipalities. So we have looked at a number of supply and demand factors, looking at active developments in 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 the approvals process, consideration of water, waste water servicing capacity, intensification opportunities. We've also considered provincial legislation and policy direction regarding residential growth. On the demand side, we've considered historical population and employment trends over the last twenty years. We've looked at building permit activity as well at a local municipal level. We've considered historical commuting patterns and employment growth within the the county and surrounding area as well as local trends within each of the municipalities for employment. We've considered market demand for intensification and also looking at the the appeal of each of the municipalities within the county by population segment. And so each of these factors were also reviewed and considered through consultation, which each with each of the area municipalities, both through this study as well as through the development charges background study. Next slide. So this just provides a summary of the growth rates, annual growth rates for population in each of the area municipalities. And you can see here that the growth rates are anticipated anticipated to be quite steady to to strong in each of the area municipalities. For the the city of Woodstock and Tilsonburg and Ingersoll, we are expecting the annual growth rates to moderate. Now, we are anticipating a a high concentration of the population in in these areas, but ultimately, as these as the the larger urban centers continue to grow, we would expect to see a bit of a moderation in annual growth rates. For the townships, we are projecting as well, strong population growth and growth rates to be relatively stronger in these areas than what we've seen in the past over the last decade or so. On the next slide, we just provide a bit more detail of that in terms of the actual numbers. Wanted to point out that for each of the area municipalities, the projected growth in population is higher than what we've seen over the past ten to twenty years. With respect to the concentration of the population within the county, about seventy two percent of that growth has been identified to be accommodated within Woodstock, Tilsonburg and Ingersoll, about twenty eight percent in the townships. Next slide. So in terms of the actual housing growth that's associated with that population forecast, you can see here that again, each of the area municipalities are anticipated to experience stronger annual housing growth than they've experienced over the past ten years, similar to the the population forecast. Next slide. And then this just provides a summary of the employment forecast, similar to the population trends. Again, we're expected to see stronger employment growth over each of the or within each of the area municipalities. About eighty four percent of the employment growth has been allocated to Woodstock, Tilsonburg and Ingersoll, so a large concentration of that growth is identified within each of those municipalities. But again, each of the townships are also expected to see stronger employment growth relative to what they've experienced in the the past ten ten years. Again, driven by stronger population growth and steady opportunities in most cases within the industrial sector. Next slide. So in terms of conclusions, so in terms of the overall population force for a forecast for the county, we have assessed our projections based on the Ministry of Finance projections. We have targeted that forecast over the two thousand fifty one period, and then we've extended the forecast out to sixty one. We do feel that the the two thousand twenty four Ministry of Finance forecast does represent an ambitious outlook to growth relative to historical trends, but we do feel it's an appropriate forecast, looking at the long term growth outlook for the county. In comparison to the development charge work that we've prepared earlier this year, we are consistent over the fifteen year period. So that forecast goes out to the two thousand and thirty six horizon. So we're still consistent with that forecast, which means that our population and our capital needs are still in alignment with respect to that that assessment that was previously prepared. Relative to the work that was prepared by for the county back in two thousand twenty under the the previous conference review, we are projected to accommodate significantly higher population and employment growth relative to that forecast. And again, that has been further supported by the recent trends we've seen in in labor force growth, population growth and the the various Ministry of Finance forecasts that have also been released since that time period. Next, next slide, please. So in terms of next steps, we're now finalizing our allocations of population growth by settlement area within to the townships. And then from there, we'll be providing a assessment of urban land requirements out to a thirty year projection period to assess urban lands for both residential and mixed use areas, including commercial institutional uses as well as employment areas, so industrial areas. I will also be conducting an assessment of needs for rural employment as well through that through that work. And then we're anticipating to release a a draft report and ultimately a final report shortly after the first quarter of of two thousand twenty five. And that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to take any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Jamie. Any questions on the report? Counselor Schaefer.
Thank you, Deputy Warden, through you. National immigration numbers have been exceedingly high the last number of years, and we're starting to see the current government do a U turn on that a bit, and I would suggest with a federal election next year, and you may see some more reduction in those numbers. So my question is, how do you? How do you track that? How do you look at those trends and forecast them out for a number of years when there's some serious changes probably happening to what numbers we've seen last few years?
Yeah, thank you, through the warden. It's a it's a great question. There's definitely been a lot of a lot of changes in volatility and in immigration and 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 economic trends to try to follow. It's 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 quite difficult to try to align a forecast over a thirty to forty year period based on an annual set of targets that that come out from the from the federal government every every year. So we do have a strong consideration for those trends. We're tracking, you know, StatsCan targets for post censo population growth. But I would also, I would also stress that with, so when we look at the those impacts on immigration, the largest areas that we see being impacted are the the larger urban centers of 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 Ontario and Canada. So places like Toronto and Peel Region and Ottawa are being heavily affected by those downward trends in non permanent residents. They're also to some extent being affected by lower targets for for immigration. In Oxford County, as we pointed out, the vast majority of of immigration is being driven by that outward growth pressure from central Ontario and other parts of of Ontario. And so I I would not expect you're going to be as heavily impacted by immigration targets. But it's something that we are we are monitoring. I think it really does come down to having a good process in place to to monitor and track growth. And we spent a lot of time at Watson developing, we've developed a very elaborate and in our opinion, a very a solid approach to tracking and monitoring population growth trends on a on a on a regular basis. And so I think that's another key aspect is to 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 monitor that growth. And you do have the opportunity to, you know, to regularly update these forecasts. So while we're projecting growth out forty years, there's an opportunity to open the forecasts up. And typically, that forecast review happens at at least every ten years, if not, if not on a more frequent basis through the official planner review process.
Thank you.
Counselor Accioni.
Thank you, through you, Deputy Warden. To Counselor Schaefer's comments first and to Mr. Cook, I got a report just on last weekend from Immigration Canada saying that Woodstock is the third fastest growing city in Canada for immigration at twelve point three percent last year. This, it's kind of worrisome, I think, in this in the report. It's not, it doesn't recognize that at all. So is this just a bleep? Unfortunately, I didn't go back in time. I never really thought much of it until Counselor Schaefer mentioned the immigration piece. Is that a normal trend? Are you using that as this going forward? Because that's going to put I think a lot more pressures than even what this report states. Those numbers alone.
Through you, Deputy Warden. So with respect to, so I haven't, I haven't seen that article. With respect to those trends, so immigration levels are only typically reported by StatsCan at the the countywide level for Oxford. So we actually don't have specific trends regarding the type of immigration to to Woodstock, only the county. But what we do find, as I mentioned earlier in the presentation, is that the majority of that of that immigration or that sorry, that net migration is coming from intra provincial migration. We're still not seeing significant amounts of international migration coming to the county. And so I would question, you know, whether we're seeing, I don't think it's strong immigration. It's it's strong intra provincial migration. And we have seen a spike. We can check, I can check that article to determine where that that came from. But we had, we saw a significant spike, as I mentioned in the presentation back on slide six. Post COVID from two thousand twenty one to two thousand twenty three, we saw a big spike in in immigration, and a lot of that was coming to Woodstock. So when we looked at the Woodstock population, we did see a big spike in the amount of of population coming to coming to Woodstock. We we also see that those levels of immigration, levels of building permit activity are starting to moderate from that peak period. So while I think that the growth outlook is going to be much stronger for Woodstock and for the county relative to historical trends, I do think that we we likely have seen a peak during that twenty twenty to twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three period. And we likely will see some moderation relative to that peak.
Okay, if I may continue, thank you, Deputy Warden. Just for your own reference, then, Mr. Cook, it's, I quickly Googled it, and it was dated. Immigration, found it on immigration.ca dated May nineteen twenty twenty four, if you want that report. So that, again, that tends to make me a little worried for Oxford County itself. I mean, we're we're going to be dense with only, in your report, you've got, let's say, forty three percent. Sorry, you forecasted forty three percent to Woodstock, but yet the the land is allocated, you're only forecasting twenty six percent high density, which we're, I think we're going to have to make that much higher. It's going to be, if we're going to see growth like that here in the city of Woodstock, it's going to have to probably double based on the numbers that are being seen. I know there's more coming with land supply and everything else, but it's really worrisome for our neighbors and their land supply because we're going to be taking up a lot of farmland for a lot of houses if it's not done in our urban centers. And it's worrisome. It's 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 scary looking at these kind of numbers.
Through you, Deputy Warden, if I could just comment that we have taken a close look at the forecast by age structure for population, the migration. And there's a correlation between, you know, who we think is coming to the county and to Woodstock, what kind of housing they're going to require. When it comes to the migration, a lot of that migration is going to be putting demands on grade related housing, so single detached housing, townhomes to accommodate largely families and and children. But when we look at the existing population base, there's a significant amount of the population that's aging. The the seventy five plus age group, I didn't get into this in the presentation, but that that component of the population is growing at about double the the pace of the overall county at about three percent or so a year without a lot county at about 3% or so a year without a lot of migration. It's all, it's all occurring, uh, due to the aging of the, the existing baby boom population. So in our opinion, there's going to be demands on all forms of housing. There'll be demands on, uh, low-density, high-density, needs for ownership housing and, and significantly more, uh, demand for rental housing. There's also some potential for additional housing that's not being factored into this population forecast right now as a result of those that are living in the county now that ultimately are not being adequately housed. So there's additional population, sorry, additional housing, um, associated with, uh, with some of that latent, uh, demand, so to speak, within the existing base. We've had significant discussions with each of the area municipalities and the county on the, the housing mix. Still open to, to take a further look at that. Uh, but in my opinion, um, there's going to be a broad need for a, a range of housing to accommodate all, all demographic groups.
Yeah, yeah, one more and then one more.
May I continue? Yeah, sorry. So I'm just curious, in your calculations, in your forecasts, are you going to be coming forward in the next phase with the land needs trying to save farmland or grow everywhere here in Oxford County?
So in the next phase of the work, we're going to provide a, uh, an analysis of how that growth is being allocated within each of the area municipalities, within the built-up areas as well as in, uh, designated greenfield areas and expansion areas. And ultimately, in, in my opinion, it's going to come down to providing a balance between accommodating growth within growing, growing up and growing out. And so we will, and we would anticipate to see, um, you know, significant opportunities, uh, particularly in the, the city of Woodstock and, and, and the, the larger urban centers for increased intensification in terms of absolute, uh, levels of intensification. And that is very critical that we get that right, obviously, because we don't want to see a situation where we over, uh, uh, we over-project, uh, needs for urban expansion. Um, I have not finished that analysis yet, uh, but ultimately, we're going to be looking for a balanced approach, uh, when we look to how we're going to be accommodating that. And, uh, you know, I would, again, just reinforce that, in my opinion, there needs to be alignment, uh, when we look at who's coming to the county, um, in terms of the, the, the types of individuals, the age of individuals, their needs for housing, and then, you know, what form of housing are they, are they going to be demanding? And we think there's going to be a, a need for a, a broad range. If we're too, um, restrictive on that housing forecast, um, then ultimately, we, we likely will have challenges in accommodating this forecast. Um, but we also want to make sure that we, um, we provide a, a significant choice, um, within that, um, in some of those more higher-density categories that you're mentioning. So, so we do expect to see a, a broad range.
Okay, uh, thank you, Counselor Martin, and then Counselor Guevazi.
Thank you, Deputy Warden Peterson. Um, I'm looking at slide 18 on ours where we're talking about annual housing growth by area municipality for 2021 to 2061. And across the board, it appears that, uh, all municipalities will be up in housing growth. And then when I looked two slides earlier to slide number 16, and you mentioned that you anticipate that urban growth will moderate, uh, and we see that on the statistics. How, how do we expect growth to moderate and yet housing to, to grow across the board?
Yeah, thank you. That's a good question, uh, through the Deputy Warden. So it's really, I think it's more of a, maybe a math issue when it comes to moderation in growth rates as a, the larger, uh, municipalities of Woodstock, Tilsonburg, and Ingersoll, because they already have a fairly high base, um, even if they're growing, uh, even if the absolute levels of, of population housing are continuing to be strong and even higher than, uh, historical trends, ultimately, their rate of growth starts to slow, uh, over time. So the population growth rates are moderating from that perspective, but, uh, in absolute terms, the amount of population growth that we're projecting and the amount of housing growth that we're projecting in each of the municipalities is much stronger than what it's been historically. It's not quite double, but it's around 80% higher when it comes to population and, and housing and employment overall. So it's a bit more of a math issue when, when I say moderating.
Okay, Counselor Guevazi.
Thank you, through you, Deputy Warden. Um, why, why is it a 40-year forecast? So like, under the provincial policy, we have to have, um, land, I believe it's for up to 30 years availability. So like, why do you look at a forecast? I just feel there's so many variables, um, over 40 years, and I think trends are changing. I think we can all see it in our building permits. Um, they've gone down significantly. Um, Counselor Schaefer, what, what he mentioned about immigration, uh, which is being looked at to a more sustainable level. I, I guess my concern would be that I actually feel that the numbers are somewhat high, but if they're projected too, there's a problem if they're too low, which this county saw in the past. But if they're too high, we're also going to have residents paying for funding reserves and future infrastructure that maybe they don't need to pay for.
Yeah, thank you, through, uh, the Deputy, uh, Warden. So it's a good point, the, uh, so the, the PPS, the provincial planning statement requires that we look out over a period of between 20 to 30 years. So when we're looking at the need for land, we can, we cannot go any longer than a 30-year projection period. Um, typically, that would be, uh, 30 years from the timing of the approval of the official plan. So assuming the official plan is approved, uh, amended and updated and approved in the next few years, that puts us into a period of, um, uh, around, uh, 30 years from 2024, so, uh, or 2025, so around 2055, 2056. We provided a 60-year, uh, sorry, a 40-year forecast to ensure that there's ample, um, room in the projection period to ensure that no matter, uh, when we ultimately look at that 30-year period, there's enough, uh, of a planning horizon to work with. We're also allowed to look out beyond 30 years when it comes to planning for employment areas, planning for public facilities, and planning for infrastructure. So for, uh, for those purposes, it's helpful to have a long-term forecast, um, and so that's another reason why we've done it this way. Uh, I agree that the further out we go, the, the less accurate we, 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 we are. And so that is why we need to regularly monitor and regularly update this forecast, you know, through, um, through this official plan review process that we go through.
Through, through Deputy Warden, um, I, you had a chart about migration into the county. Does population factor in migration out?
Yes, uh, so, uh, through, through the Deputy Warden, the, the numbers that we're showing there in that slide are the net, uh, amounts of migration. So immigration in, uh, immigration out, and then similarly on the, um, interprovincial and intra-provincial, it's the net, the net result that we're looking at there.
Thank you.
Okay, Counselor Palmer.
Yeah, through the chairman, to Mr. Cook, I appreciate the numbers that you were telling us today. However, I don't believe, certainly the people in my township are willing to, uh, see so much more activity, both for development and jobs. Wait and see, we've been, just been through, uh, annexation with the city of Woodstock, uh, an extreme, uh, amount of pressure against our township to do anything to go ahead. So with that, I, I'm sure you've done a good job. I just, uh, don't think that everybody that you want to talk to is on your side. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Counselor Petrie, and then Counselor, or Deputy Warden, or Warden, right?
Thank you, Deputy Warden, through you. Question for, around, uh, policies. Do policies, uh, from the local, regional municipalities, uh, local, regional and, uh, different, and the county as well, do they factor into your outcome that you have presented here today? Our current policies, our planning policies?
Uh, through the Deputy Warden. Uh, so, so yes, we're looking at, um, the, when we're looking at this long-term projection, we are looking at the framework for planning within the provincial framework and, um, the county and local framework. So, so we're having a look at, um, policies with respect to intensification in terms of where they are today and what trends we think are going to influence those policies going forward. We're looking at policies, for example, with respect to, uh, density, uh, for housing density, and ultimately, what trends we think are going to influence those policies. So those are probably two, two key ones. Um, and I think, uh, ultimately, uh, we're also, you know, considering broader policies with, with respect to growth management. We want to ensure that we're developing a, uh, a vision for the county, not just a growth forecast, but a vision for the county that's ultimately going to ensure that the county, uh, becomes a, uh, uh, a, a more prosperous, uh, competitive, and more livable and complete, uh, county and with complete communities over, uh, the long-term forecast period. And so we'll be providing some broad guidance, uh, the, uh, through, through the phase three process of this study to help ensure that the recommendations that we're providing from the technical aspects of this study on, on population growth and land needs are ultimately lending themselves to policies that, that also support, uh, some of these broader objectives that I just mentioned with respect to sustainability and, and livability and, and completeness.
Okay, just to follow up, Deputy Warden, uh, through you, of course, uh, so you, you're saying that, uh, would it be your opinion that, uh, policies can have an effect upon the outcome of, uh, reports such as these?
Well, certainly, um, you know, there's different levels of policy. So there's, there's, you know, there's, there's policies at the federal level and provincial level, and clearly, those policies are having an impact on how, uh, uh, how, uh, growth is materializing, um, across, uh, and ultimately how it's being accommodated a, across, uh, the province. Um, so yes, there's definitely a direct impact on those policies. Ultimately, though, we have to consider, uh, how, uh, you know, how much impact some of those policies are going to have on controlling, uh, market trends and demographic trends and economic conditions, uh, that are also shaping, uh, the growth trends within, um, within the county. And so while we, while some of those policies can have a, uh, an, an impact and, and shape growth, um, we need to be careful that we don't, um, we don't, uh, see, uh, you know, we don't project, you know, significant changes to trends that are likely un, um, unlikely or, you know, um, un, you know, um, again, you know, less, um, less likely to occur, particularly in the short term. So, so, um, so they do, so we do have significant regard to those, to those policies, but ultimately, we need to make sure that, that we're balancing those policies again with, um, economic and, and, and market, uh, trends that we're, we're assessing through this study.
Sorry, just to clarify with that, uh, specifically talking to Oxford County policies and, uh, regional, like the regional level policies and how much effect they have on the trends, maybe not just even in this report, but other items that you've worked on, uh, is that something that, uh, you know, this, that's our business is putting in policies to try to affect change at our local level? And, uh, I guess I'm asking you, does that have an effect on the outcome of reports such as this? Or is it basically driven, is this data basically driven by provincial and federal levels with trends, not, uh, policy?
So again, I think this work is, is factoring in policies at all levels, but ultimately, the work that we're doing is, is, you know, considered, and, you know, a, a comprehensive update to the work that was carried out as part of the last official plan review to help inform that policy as well. So, so we see this work, uh, really helping to set the stage and form future policies as well with respect to intensification rates, rates of, of, of growth, density levels, um, uh, and, you know, other, other trends with respect to, uh, economic growth. So, so we're really looking at this report to provide a, a, a review and update to, to those trends to help inform policies. And ultimately, um, you know, the county may decide to, uh, to, 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 to modify, you know, through, through your, um, you know, through the review of council, you may decide to make changes to ultimately the, the recommendations that come out of this study through, um, you know, through the technical findings. Um, and that could be policy-driven, but ultimately, we're, we're, we're aiming to inform the county of what we think, um, are suitable and appropriate policies over the long term for, for planning and, and growth management, informed by demographic and economic trends.
Yep, one more and then we'll move on.
Yep, thank you, Deputy Warden. I guess my question is, uh, obviously, this policy document is used for a lot of other policy documents that we rely upon, uh, development charges, uh, any sort of growth policy, those sort of numbers. And I'm concerned based on the last, of course, hindsight is 2020, this is a close-to-impossible task to get bang on. Um, but, uh, certainly, our last report and numbers did not pan out the way we thought. And so, uh, I'm interested to know, uh, and maybe this is not a, a question to the, the presenter, but, uh, interested to know how much we can rely on this document to go forward. Are we going to make policies to where we want to go? Or do we want to make policies until we reach these numbers, uh, to get these numbers? And what sort of reliability factor can we expect? And I guess the question, I guess the question that ties into that is, were there other models that were considered, uh, as part of this report? And if so, why was this model chosen over others?
So with respect to the last question, um, there's really, the, the one primary model that we, we look at is the model that we've used here, which is to look at the, the, uh, the, the components of population growth, uh, that I've mentioned, migration being a key one, natural increase, uh, birth and death being the other. We've looked at, um, the age structure of the population. And then there's, there is a, uh, there's a lot of background material that Provost has prepared, um, since the 90s in terms of how to project, uh, long-term growth and land needs assessments. We are consistent with those provincially accepted approaches, but the province is also now moving away from a prescriptive approach. So it's, it's taken away that, that very prescriptive guidance, and it's left the approach to how we undertake these forecasts, to, to the municipalities to determine how they want to best, uh, conduct an assessment like this. We still feel that the approach that we're taking is appropriate. We think we're striking the right balance between being, um, prescriptive enough and outcome-based enough. Um, in terms of the, you know, the, the accuracy and the reliability, uh, I have no, uh, no question that projecting growth out to 40 years is a daunting task. It's very difficult. Um, the further out we go, the more, the, the less accurate we, we are, which is, again, why we need to review these forecasts, why they need to be monitored and updated on a regular basis. When it comes to other important documents that this forms the foundation to, like development charges, we typically, uh, work with a timeframe or a planning horizon that's typically shorter. Uh, in that document, we're using a 2036 horizon. And in, in documents like that, what's most important is that we're aligned with the, the growth that we're projecting and the capital that's ultimately required to ensure that we, uh, ultimately in the report like that, uh, uh, get the charge right essentially with respect to, you know, what the DC rates are. Um, but there'll be other work that will be required that falls out of this work with respect to infrastructure planning, development phasing, and nobody has a crystal ball, including me. Um, you know, we do this work all over Ontario, and we, uh, we do our best to, to get it right, but we're, we're never going to be 100% accurate. We just don't have that level of precision, you know, in the world we live in, especially over a 40-year period. But we do need to plan, we need to be proactive, and we need to, we need to, uh, plan, uh, our population, we need to plan housing, we need to plan our land requirements and our infrastructure. And this is ultimately the most provincially accepted approach to do that.
Okay, thank you. Warden Ryan.
Thank you, Deputy Warden. Um, I have two questions, so I'll ask the first one and then go down the list. In the report, in figure three, uh, draft forecasted county-wide incremental housing growth in new units, 2021 to 2061, um, it says that there is a change in annual housing units from 710 in 2016 to 2021 to 1160 in 2021 to 2026. So my question is, this, is this a forecasted need or an expected, um, build? And, and, and then, you know, how many were actually built in 2021, 2022, et cetera?
So through the deputy, this is a, um, this is an estimate of the need over the next five years, and- five years, and we've taken a look at this, and we do feel like we're tracking quite close to this number. I think one of the key things to also recognize, that I think I mentioned in the presentation, is that there was a lag between the building permanent activity and the peak period of the census, sorry, the peak period following the pandemic from 2020 to 2021 and the census numbers. So there was about 1,200 units that didn't show up in the 2021 census, that from building permits that were issued in 2020 and 2021. So they're now working their way through the forecast, and they are, they're, one of the reasons why we're seeing this growth being quite a bit higher in the next five years relative to permanent activity. But we did see a fairly significant increase in permanent activity between 2021 to 2023. We saw a slowdown for the first half of 2024, but we're now starting to see growth in the last quarter in 2024 across the county pick up again as interest rates start to fall. We're starting to see some resurgence in demand for new units for building permanent activity, and we have anticipated a moderate increase to 2025, which would then get us to that 2026 number. So when we look at how we're tracking on permanent activity, when we look at how we're tracking relative to the post-sensile estimates, we feel that that five-year forecast is still in line with ultimately where we think we'll get to by 2026.
A follow-up, then. On Slide 12 of your presentation, it shows the historical census average of new units as 655, the lowest being 540, the peak being 710. That's through to 20, from 2006 to 2021. But it shows going forward from 2021 to 2061, the forecasted average of 1,050. So is the data that you're saying shows that we're going to, in Oxford County, build on average 400, on average 300 more units per year than our best that we've ever done?
So again, through the deputy mayor, Warden, so what we're saying here is that, yes, that we're expecting a higher rate of housing growth annually over the next 40 years relative to what we've experienced in the last 15 to 20 years. In the last five-year period, the census, while it shows 710 units a year over that period, it's actually understated the amount of permanent activity that was, that was issued, permits that were issued during that time period, because there was a significant lag between 2000 and, from 2020 and 2021. But we're also expecting to see a continued increase in the trajectory of housing demand over the next 40 years. And again, that was really, coming back to the four points I pointed out to with respect to the outward growth pressure that we're experiencing from the Greater Golden Horseshoe, steady employment growth locally and regionally within the economic region of London, opportunities for more remote and hybrid work, and the draw of the county to a broad range of demographic groups, not just those in the working age groups. So we do feel that, looking at these trends, that we are going to see stronger growth across the county. What I'm seeing across the province is that there was a time when we used to do these projections where the larger urban centers, like Toronto and Peel and others in the GTA and Ottawa, were the high-growth areas, and everybody else was growing at a fairly moderate level. And that has changed, it's changed significantly since about 2015, and it's continuing to change, driven by those forces that I mentioned. A lot of it, again, being that outward growth pressure and that migration from other large urban centers to places like Oxford. And we do expect that's going to continue over the long term.
Okay, any other questions from council? Not seeing any? Thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you.
Warden Ryan.
Thank you, Deputy Warden. Moved by myself, seconded by Mayberry, that the recommendations in Report CP 2024-323 be adopted, and whereas Oxford County residents are already experiencing consequences of the current high rate of growth, such as homelessness, mental health supports, addiction supports, encampment responses, housing availability and attainability, lack of primary medical care, lack of adequate school spaces, growth pressure on green space and agricultural land, and whereas many of our partners in service delivery are struggling with demand that is increasing faster than resources, and whereas this continued growth pressure, combined with insufficient resources and provincial support, is diminishing the safety and well-being of residents, and whereas Oxford County is already struggling to continue to provide services at a level residents expect without unsustainable property tax increases, such as a 2024 10% increase in ambulance calls with only 2% population growth, and whereas the tax increase is necessary to maintain service levels and accommodate further growth as directed by the Province of Ontario per Section 2.1 of the Ontario, of the Provincial Planning Statement 2024 is unsustainable, therefore be it resolved that staff return report on the current and projected costs of direct and indirect services delivered by Oxford County and the cost of services financed by Oxford County, and the staff return report on what level of growth Oxford can sustainably be accommodated, and that the Warden write to the province indicating that Oxford cannot continue to accommodate the rate and level of growth directed by the provincial, Province of Ontario per Section 2.1 of the Provincial Planning Statement 2024 without adequate slash increased provincial support and funding, and will inform the province of the growth it can sustainably accommodate at a future date. And that this resolution be forwarded to Oxford's area municipal partners, the Western Ontario Wardens Caucus, the Association of Municipalities of Ontario, Oxford MPP, Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing, Minister of Finance, with above-directed letter, and the premier.
Okay. Thank you, thank you, Warden. I just want to remind council, too, the length of our meeting as we're going forward here. Not that you all didn't have good questions, you did, but we're dragging on on this one quite a long time. So saying that, as a mover, do you wish to comment?
I do. Given that the subject matter of this is not totally germane to the item, was the notice of motion provisions by this motion?
Yeah, it's not a notice of motion, it's a motion just to receive the report, I believe, right?
It just goes above and beyond receiving the report, so.
we need to have it as a notice of motion.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Warden Ryan.
I will attempt to be brief. So I want to start off by saying I'm not from Oxford originally, so I'm net immigration, I'm growth in Oxford County. So this is not coming, for me, coming from a place of saying, you know, new people are not welcome here, and, because it's not. However, I think the statement in the report that the growth that's here is ambitious is a massive understatement, right? It is growth that they make clear is higher than what we have expected and what we have experienced. Housing starts, if you just look at the one slide, never mind the 40-year forecast, just 2031, it says the population of Oxford would be 154,000, that's six years. We all know how long it takes to actually build houses, right? I mean, we approve planning applications in here all the time, and then residents say to us, I thought something was going to happen there, I thought something was going to happen there, two years, three years goes by, not a shovel in the ground. To say that we're going to accommodate 30,000 more residents of Oxford County in that time is ambitious. We know how long it takes to build. I love reports like this and data and analysis and forecasting and all that stuff, but in Missouri, they have a saying, right? Missouri is the "show me" state. I used to travel to Missouri a lot for work. I wouldn't vote the way Missourians vote, but nevertheless, saying "show me" is a good thing, I think. And when we walk outside, just this building, you don't have to go one block to see that our community is not handling our rate of growth well. And we can talk about all the things and how we're going to do them, and we're trying, you know? The city of Woodstock has its mayor's task force and encampment responses, that together we're doing the community safety well-being plan, our hospitals are struggling, everybody is struggling, and yet, encampments are still there. We received a delegation this morning urgently caring about, you know, people in Ingersoll, where are they going to go when the snow flies? And it's when it's not just below, down to minus two at night, but it's, you know, minus two in the day. We are not handling this well, and we need help. And I think it would be irresponsible of us to simply accept, you know, the province's growth numbers and say, well, we'll just keep doing our best, well, clearly our collective best, whether it's Oxford, area municipalities, our school partners, et cetera, the province, the federal government, clearly our collective best is not good enough. It is not good enough. We all get calls, whether it's about the person living in the encampment or the person living next to the encampment, whether it's about the person whose kid is in grade two and using, having to go from a portable to put their boots on to go to the bathroom in February, somebody who can't get primary care, we're not handling it well. And I think this is the moment where we need to push back at the province and say, you can force whatever growth you want on us. According to the Municipal Act and the memorandum of understanding with AMO, the province recognizes us as a mature and responsible level of government for areas within our jurisdiction. That's why they gave us these numbers, to say, you tell us. I think we should tell them. I think we should say to them, as a mature and responsible level of government, we think this growth is unsustainable without increased help from the province. If you're not going to give us that increased help, then you wear it and you tell our residents that, don't worry, everything's okay, even though your community is forecast to grow by another 30,000 people in the next six years.
Thank you. Counselor Mayberry, a second, or do you wish to comment on that?
Well, very briefly, I think historically, we've always believed that the economy scale, that as you grow, things will get better. The problem with economy of scale, and economists are usually the last ones to want to say this, but the economy of scale actually works both ways. The things that are positive sometimes get bigger and better, but things that are negative sometimes get bigger and better. And that's, that's true in any kind of living organism, and it's certainly true in the county. And that's my concern. I'm not opposed to growth, and I would agree with Counselor Accione, that if we're going to have growth, let's plan it well, and let's look at how do we go to intensify and increase the populations in our urban areas and do it sustainably for the long term. But when we do that, we better make sure that we have also taken care of all the issues around social interactions that need to be dealt with. And if we don't build a livable and well-designed society for where everyone can flourish, then I think we're going the wrong way. My intention in supporting this motion would be that we need to, we need to look at that and say, okay, how are we going to do this? And then who's going to fund it? And we're struggling right now with how we're going to fund, in a simple example, how we're going to fund the homeless problem. And then we're saying at the same time, but we're going to increase it by another 70 or 80%. If we can't, if you can't pay for what you've got now, you probably shouldn't be buying more stuff. So, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Martin, and then Counselor Petrie.
Thank you, Deputy Warden. Peterson, the Ministry of Finance projections for 25 years is up to 200,000 people in Oxford County, and when we look at the past 25 years, we've grown about 35,000 to 40,000 people, and this is an additional 60,000 people. We are up against a wall currently. We're up against a wall socially, we're up against a wall financially, we're not, we're not there where we need to be even on our asset management plan. So to add this much growth socially, economically, financially, I think, I think we're up against a wall. The next steps in this project are an assessment of the long-term land needs in our serviced areas, and when I look at the past 25 years and the number of boundary adjustments that we've done, what does that look like for the upcoming 25 years of this projection? I'll be very curious how we continue to accomplish what we're accomplishing without taking up mass amounts of agricultural land. This motion identifies many areas where we're not keeping up, but I'm curious what added impacts on, what added density will mean and what the health impacts will be on our built environment? What are, what's the impact on our water aquifers? What's the impact on electrical capacity? What's the impact on transportation capacity and gridlock and, you know, the environmental concerns that go along with it? I'll fully support this motion because I think that at some point, and it's probably now, the growth needs to be held in check, because we, if the, if the province and the federal government are not going to come to the table with us as partners to facilitate this growth, we cannot continue to bear it as municipal entities.
Thank you, agree 100%. Counselor Petrie.
Thank you, Deputy Warden. So I have a couple of issues with this, because given, given the complexity of the task, it is ultimately impossible to accurately predict with a reasonable amount of certainty what our growth figures will look like. And I firmly believe that the policies we make have a large decision on that or can have a large decision on that, depending on what we do and what we don't do. You know, the inputs that are used are subjective, and they affect the outcome greatly. You know, there's trends out there, and this is certainly not a comment on the, this is certainly not a comment on the worker skill that's been used to repair this, it's certainly just on the impossible task to undertake it. And so I don't, I don't think we can put too much weight into what we're hearing, because we've seen in the past years that it doesn't pan out. The only reliable data is the actual data at the end of the day, and that's a situation we're all going to have to face regardless of what predictions we have. We can have predictions come out that say, oh, it's going to be a lot lower, because we can change the inputs into it. We can say it's going to be way higher if we put the inputs into it. But at the end of the day, we have to face the reality on the ground, and that's what we are facing today. And I agree with the Warden's statements that we are not, we don't have good enough support from the province to be able to deal with the situation we are today. The problem I have with the motion is that tasking staff to do another report while we're still waiting on information to come from this report, we don't have the full package. And first of all, I don't know if that full package is going to be useful, because again, not because of the work that doesn't go into it, because the impossible task it takes to do it. And I know we have to plan, and we know growth comes from somewhere, you have things that go to it. The problem is time, and delta T is a horrible thing to predict. We don't know when that growth is going to happen or not, there's too many predictors to come into it. And so I agree with sending a letter to the province saying, hey, we need help with this, but having the report come back from staff, how we're going to deal with it and what the income of that is, is like another impossible task almost to deal with, because it's too complex of an issue to be able to predict that outcome. And I think we need to focus on outcomes that we can affect now and make sure that we can try to change those and put those policies into place to deal with the issues that we can control, and try to, try to plan solutions to those. Like climate change, climate change is going to happen, we just don't know what, how are we going to adapt to it? And this is our new reality, we are going to see growth in Oxford County, it's impossible not to, how are we going to adapt to it? And that's the actuals going forward, because if we're going to try to plan to this, we're going to be off, and that's the, that's the part there. And, but I think the best data that we can come out of this is we can get policy advice on how to affect that change, so this isn't the reality that we see. Yeah, I'll leave it there for now.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Givney.
Through you, Deputy Warden, I'll be extremely brief. Number one, I think this puts us on the driver's seat, I fully support this. Sometimes I felt like I've been on an island all alone the last couple of years, because I've always been advocating that we need to control the growth. What I see are non-happy residents, I see eroding of quality of life, and not only do I see it, but people tell me it. They tell me that every single day, and I think that this is a well-written resolution that identifies all the concerns, and ultimately, moving forward, we need to control the growth, we need to match it with all the infrastructure. There's too much pressure on the budget, taxation, I know, you know, at all levels of government is just increasing, increasing, and people can't handle it anymore. And that is a direct result of too much growth, too fast. I almost feel like it took a year or two to wake up from a coma during COVID. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Accione.
Thank you, through you. I was initially leaning towards Counselor Petrie and concerns about supporting this. I think after hearing the report versus just reading it, I am seriously got some concerns still. I can't speak for everybody here, of course, but I do know Woodstock, we're prepared to hit 5,500 by 2031, just by a pure numbers basis, you know, we figured out how to do that, but literally beyond that, we have no clue. We're done, we're, land's going to be taken up, and without building, you know, 20-story apartment buildings from apartment buildings from now on, there's no way we're going to be able to reach some of these numbers listed. It's just simply impossible. So for that reason, I'm going to support this. Again, I don't think it's necessarily appropriate the way it was presented here, but yet, at the end of the day, I think we need help, and we definitely recognize that we, we don't have the supports from upper tiers of government to hit these targets. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Tate. Then Counsel Schaefer, and then Warden Ryan.
Through the chair, and I have no issue with the way it was presented because once you have a report, you can do any motion you want to the report. So just, I know you got a little wound up there, so that's, I fully support it. I also support the motion as I asked our CIO years ago to do a report. I thought it would be beneficial for council to understand residential, what it adds to the tax base because residential does not pay its way. We've grown way too fast. I think it's an issue, immigration issue, which has stopped, and it's, I've always said for years, it's a Toronto issue. I'm tired of looking after Toronto's problems. So I don't see that the rates are still going to go up as, if you read the news, all building has stopped in Toronto. I think that I read the other day, there's going to be 70,000 empty condos in the next year. So I think the immigration to this way is going to stop, but also it's, it's impacting our infrastructure, our healthcare, and as noted with the ambulance, people are using that as healthcare instead of the hospital because they can't get in. So fully support the motion and fully support the way it was written.
Okay, thank you. Counsel Schaefer.
Thank you, Deputy Warden, through you. I think growing by 97,000 people by 2061, it begs two questions. Are people still going to want to live here with that many people in this county? And maybe more importantly, are people going to be able to afford to stay here? And I do think we need some help. I will support this motion.
Thank you. And Warden Ryan? Counselor Tate made my point. Any other discussion? Not seeing any? I pretty much agree with every comment that come here, and I think if you look at last year's budget, not just here, but all our own personal budgets and how hard we had trying to get that budget down to where it was, and all of it had to do pretty much with growth. And I think I agree when I hear controlled growth, I think that's definitely the way to go. We all want some growth, we have to keep a little growth or our communities get stagnant, but we definitely need to have some controlled growth there. So in saying that, nobody else? Okay, all in favor? And opposed? And that's carried. Okay.
And 8.2 Corporate Services, 8.2.1 CS 2024 dash, oh, that's as far as I can get, 39, 2025 Water and Wastewater Rates. Director Brudner, is there anything you'd like to highlight for council before I ask them for questions?
I have nothing to add, thank you.
Questions from council on the report? Not seeing any. Counsel Schaefer.
Thank you, Warden, through you. Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Martin, resolved the recommendations contained in the report, CS 2024-39, titled 2025 Water and Wastewater Rates be adopted.
Is there any discussion? Not seeing any, all is in favor? Opposed? That is carried. And 8.2.2 CS 2024-40, 2025 Business Plans and Budget Presentation. Director Brudner, I'll turn it over to you for that presentation.
Thank you, Warden. And I think the previous presentation and all the dialogue after is a good segue into this year's budget presentation as you'll see that there is a lot of pressure on, on the budget that continues into 2025 related to growth. So without further ado, we'll get into it. The budget report was published on Friday, so available to the public on the county's website, and as well, it's been delivered to each one of you to make notes and comments so that we can go through a process over the coming weeks to review the more, in more detail what's being in your hands now and presented here today. So just a little bit about the budget, we'll go through some highlights and pending adjustments and special budget meetings. So looking at the budget process, we start in June of the year prior with a budget survey. This year, we went out and we received numerous community comments and opinions in terms of whether our services should be maintained, enhanced, or reduced. And that information concluded in September, or the end of August, rather. The information was shared with senior management team as they prepared their draft business plans and budgets for 2025. So once that was, they were all drafted, senior management team went through a peer review process of all of them, including all the new initiatives, all the new items, capital included, contained in the draft budget before preparing to present this budget here today. So in terms of council meetings, it starts today. You've got your package, we'll just go through the brief highlights, and then we will be looking at those in more detail through special meetings over the next few weeks. And then we'll be seeking council's approval after December 11th council meeting. In terms of developing the budget, we start with the 2024 approved budget. We look at any base budget changes, cost of living increase included, any new initiatives, and these could, any of these items could in fact add or detract from the actual levy requirements. There's one-time items, so that's something that just occurs in the current year's budget and not ongoing. Service level is something that we're changing internally, how we deliver our service to enhance it, and in some cases, it might include increased costs or decreased costs. Initiative gapping, so that's when we have a service level that's being implemented partway through the year, so the full impact will not be felt until the following year. I missed a capital contributions, that is definitely in the, in the budget as well, and we'll get into those in a little more detail later in the slides. And then in-year approvals or carryovers, so from 2024, anything that occurred during the year that council committed to, then if there's an ongoing cost associated with that will be incorporated in the 2025 draft. And then minor and major capital, so expansion of our existing assets and new assets as required. So all of that consolidated will make up the draft 2025 budget. So looking at the highlights, and as you go through your package, similarly, if you're using a PDF version, a digital version off the county's website, you can follow it, follow through in our presentations over the coming weeks by referencing the page numbers that'll be presented on some of the slides. So in this case, the budget highlights section starts on page 10 of your budget report. So in terms of strategic priorities, as, as we know, the business plan and budget process is all predicated on the strategic plan adopted by county council, the direction that you're giving staff to administer our services. So you can see that there are 119 notable goals and objectives embedded in the 2025 draft business plan and budget. Most of those are in business plan, goals and objectives. In terms of new initiatives, we have seven new initiatives. I know this chart indicates that there's eight occurrences of addressing enhancing environmental sustainability and fostering progressive government. That is because one of the new initiatives actually hits both of those pillars, that being the Thornton Wellhead Naturalization Project. So we hear, we'll hear more about that in the coming weeks. And as well as our FTEs, you can see that 16 of the 21 FTEs that we're requesting in the 2025 budget do directly impact these two pillars. In terms of the budget at a glance, this chart is set up so that anything under the blue, the dark blue bar that is entitled levy budget, that incorporates the levies that are required to be collected from the taxpayers in Oxford County related to, and we have three separate levies. We have a general levy, so that levy is imposed on all property taxpayers across all municipalities. In terms of the library and the court security levies, those are imposed on all except for the city of Woodstock, simply because the city of Woodstock has their own library service and because the court security special levy is designed to help support court services that are delivered by the Woodstock Police Service on behalf of the County of Oxford Courthouse. So it's just a way because the provincial government doesn't really recognize how to equalize the costs related to that service that they demand in our community in a, in a two-tier structure. So this is a way of trying to level out the funding field in, in terms of that court security. So you can see that the general levy in 2024 is proposed to be $93 million. That's a $10.4 million increase over 2024. That results in a 12.6% increase over the prior year. Similarly, libraries levy is 5.7 million in the draft budget. That's a half a million dollar increase over 2024. And court security, you can see that it's an increase of 40,000 over last year for a total of 123,000 in, in the levy. So even though the dollar amounts are relatively minor for court security, the percentage change year over year is, is rather significant. Nevertheless, the consolidation of the impact on the taxpayers, you can see the bottom line there. So the general levy impact on a typical residential property is 10.3% as presented in the draft budget. For library purposes, 7.9%, and for court security, again, 46%, but minimal in terms of tax dollar requirement. So overall, that consolidated rate is 10.1% impact. And the second columns there, the rates budget, so that's the teal colored or the greenish colored, I don't know what it looks like on your screen, but that incorporates, that's water and wastewater related. So we're looking at new rates for 2025 that are approximately an 8.8% increase over the prior year to generate $48.3 million to fund those services. That's a $3.6 million increase over last year. And that ranges for the average household, and that's based on 140, 150 cubic meters a year, 2.9 to 14.3% increase year over year. So looking at the total expenditure distribution for 2025, you can see that water and wastewater still lead the pack, although it's more of a percentage difference than what we've seen in prior years. So we can see the cost of those services are increasing. Again, that again goes back to the level of growth that we're experiencing. And then you can see that the other areas of highest need in terms of expenditures includes roads are Woodingford Lodge, long-term care services, and childcare and early on. So looking on to how the budget is funded, you can see that the predominant funder is grants and government transfers of 26.4%. And this is the first time that we've seen the grants and the government transfers exceed the amount of our, our property taxes and our levies. So it actually comes in second this year, and then followed shortly thereafter by reserve transfers, user fees, and charges. And you can see the rest of them are development charges, debentures, and interest income. So I mentioned the new initiatives on an earlier slide, so we have seven incorporated into the 2025 budget. You can see them listed there, Thornton Wellfield Naturalization, we're doing a benchmark project for traffic data, and this is related to our consideration of an automated speed enforcement program here in Oxford. The next one, Storm Sewer Closed Circuit Television Inspection Program, and this is for our storm sewer systems to make sure that they are in good state of repair and not prone to failing. The next one is Tulsimore Water Main Swabbing and Sanitary Derouting Program, so for the water and wastewater systems within that, that particular area. We're also looking at a water and wastewater electronic logbook to just help, again, modernize our, our service delivery, find efficiencies in how we maintain and record those systems' information. And then we've been asked to report back to council. In September, there was a motion passed by council to, for staff to bring back a potential solution for improving the technology within this room for these meetings. So you'll find that in the budget as well. And then the last one on the list here, but not least important, is a leadership development and succession planning program, and that's to address our growing population and our workforce and how do we maintain and retain and prepare ourselves for future leadership. So next, looking at that full-time equivalent plan, you can see that we're proposing 21.9 new FTEs throughout the workforce in 2025. The details of those additions can be found on page 74 of the book. And again, we will get into those in more detail over the coming weeks. In terms of budget impacts, now this tries to demonstrate, you know, how we determine what the base budget increase is based on all of those other new initiatives, one-time items, service levels, the capital contributions, in-year carryovers, and the minor capital infrastructure investments. So you can see that the total column is followed thereafter by all the funding mechanisms. So you can see of that $49.2 million, 29.3 is funded through reserves. We've been fortunate in the past to have sufficient reserves to fund those, particularly you can see minor and capital infrastructure. And then in terms of others, this would be debentures or grants, and then followed by rates. So rates is, is covering $653,000 of those budget impacts, and then the rest falls on taxation of 4.0, almost 4%, or 4.4 million, rather, so about a 5% increase of new budget impacts. And then we take from that, we reduce the prior year's non-recurring items, prior year's initiative gapping, and development charge exemptions, which is new to the, the budget this year, particularly in, in terms of its magnitude. In the past, we've had to fund exemptions, non-statutory as well as statutory. However, just with the level of growth that we've experienced in Oxford in the past year, it's certainly demonstrated that, that, and our experience in 2024, that it's, it's not sustainable at the, at the levels that we've been funding it or budgeting to fund it in the past. So you'll see that that's a significant increase, 5.6 as indicated on this, on this slide. So once we remove those items, the base budget increase then is a 2.6% increase. So 3.5, that's impacting rates, and 2.3 million dollars impacting taxation. So now taking a look at those development charge exemptions in a little more detail, you can see how they're broken out between statutory and non-statutory. As indicated on the prior slide, it represents 5.6% increase in the 2025 budget. The, yeah, even though it's, it's, it's an increase of 5.5 million dollars, we did have a contribution in the, an allocation in the 2025 budget, or for budget, rather, of just under a million dollars. So that helps mitigate it down and as, as well as those contributions to the net growth, reserves increasing, and then the budget exemptions from last year, then bring it down to a 4.6 million dollar increase year over year. In terms of our capital projects, you can see how our $131 million capital plan is broken down between studies and general capital, fleet, equipment and furnishings, facilities, the road network, and our stormwater systems, bridges and culverts, and water and wastewater. And of course, water and wastewater being the most predominant driver there of 62.5 million. And again, details of the capital plan can be found on page 37 of the, of the budget binder. In terms of funding that capital, you can see here, the list comes from taxation, debentures... debentures, water and wastewater rates, reserves, development charges, and grants. And those grants are from the upper levels of government, a Canadian grant, and a provincial grant of just under $16 million. So that capital budget represents a 26.4% increase over the 2024 budget, or $103.6 million. So how that funding then flows through the budget? So the, you'll see that there's $79.2 million coming from the revenue fund or the operating fund into the reserve and reserve fund. So that $79.2 million is made up of all of those elements that are listed on the right-hand side of the slide. So a portion of the general levy, $22.6 million. The library levy is contributing $40,000. Water and wastewater, interest revenue, development charge exemptions, and then the, those two grant allocations from the federal and the provincial governments, and then development charge revenues of $18.6 million. So that goes into our reserve fund. And then from the reserve fund, $123.8 million plus $7.2 million from the operating fund, fund those $131 million in capital projects. In terms of asset management plan funding, you'll find that our investment level in 2024, $55 million is being increased by $3.2 million. However, we still have $17.6 million of unfunded requirement there. So we're trying to narrow that gap. You can see that in the table below, you can see the asset management plan required investment for the general levy, library levy, and then broken down for water and wastewater rates as well, is insufficiently funded in the 2025 budget by about $17.6 million. Again, more detail on that can be found on page 33 of the budget book. So looking at the pressures, the highlights within the 2025 draft budget, we talked about the seven new initiatives to advance the strategic plan. We talked a bit about the capital contributions. We know that affordable housing is in our budget, and we've built that investment in over a period of three years, past three years. So we've got money going out to address those issues. We're attracting and retaining staff, as mentioned, through that retention program. Planning for growth, again, looking back at our most recent presentation on what the growth levels look for for the future of Oxford. Certainly, we're planning, but we're nervous about planning too far out into the horizon. As mentioned before, that it's just not predictable to be able to, you know, forecast that far into the future without really knowing what it's going to hold for us. So the 2025 budget doesn't really address too far out in terms of growth other than our 10-year growth-related plan included in the development charge study. We're maintaining service level to the extent that we can. We're maintaining our safe drinking water systems. We are addressing vulnerable and unhoused populations within the community. We're working on continued traffic calming and road safety. We're investing in our asset management plan. We're looking at changes to our curbside waste collection in this budget cycle. And also, we've incorporated an indigenous consultation plan and an update to the Safe and Well Oxford Plan, which is a regulated requirement. In terms of risks, as you can see, growth is on the top of our list. WSIB costs continue to plague our organization, most predominantly within our paramedic services and our long-term care services. Social assistance modernization, that continues to be rolled out. So that was a provincial reorganization of how social services are delivered across the province. So that migration is still in progress. Shifting fiscal accountability. Now, this is one area where we've made some noise in 2024 with respect to our advocacy efforts and in terms of, you know, these pressures on the left-hand side of the screen here, you know, are somewhat triggered by inadequate investment of the upper levels of government in areas that they should be predominantly investing in. So we are finding, because we are the government closest to the people in our communities, we are starting to fund some of those programs that should otherwise be funded by those upper-tier levels of government. And long-term care funding, we do know that there's still legislation that's being rolled out as a result of the experience in long-term care facilities across the province during COVID. New regulations and requirements, increasing the number of hours of care per resident, as an example, have all put pressure on our long-term care costs. So in summary, you can see that our, we've mentioned that our budget, our base budget increase is 2.6% over last year. The overall levy increase, this is the consolidated levies, 12.5% increase. And the increase per average residential household is $137. As we work our way through the budget process in the coming weeks, we will have a potential impact, budget impact listing, or pending impact listing included in our presentations, just monitoring any new information that's come in during that time. We typically are waiting to hear from the conservation authorities with their draft budgets for 2025 as we are required to collect a certain portion of their levies to fund their budgets in every year. So there are four conservation authorities within, that have jurisdiction within the County of Oxford. So so far, we've received two of those draft budgets. They will be on your first special budget meeting agenda. And the other ones, as they come in, will be presented to council as well. And then the other one being the Southwestern Public Health. We are a municipal funding partner within that health unit along with the City of St. Thomas and the County of Elgin. And we have included in our draft budget a 5% increase, pending, of course, hearing their approved budget for 2025. So our first special budget meeting with council is one week from today. So next Wednesday, November 20th, we will start at 9:30. And our meeting can go up to 2:30 in the afternoon. And through that process, we'll do just a bit of a recap at the start of the meeting and then delve right into the departmental budgets to glean more further detail and information that's incorporated. That ends my presentation.
Thank you. Questions for the director on the report? Counselor Schaefer.
Thank you, Warden, through you. Counselor Bougner, quick question. The difference between the 2025 budget increase of 12.5 and the 10.1% preliminary tax increase, is that growth in assessment? Is that what would make that difference?
That is correct, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Martin.
Two really quick questions through you, Warden Ryan. If I were to look for 1% savings, what would that approximately be? $700,000, $680,000?
800?
800, okay. And my second quick question, do we receive Ontario Municipal Partnership funding?
No, the county does not.
Okay, that's what I thought. Thank you.
Any other questions? Counselor Gilvezzi.
Thank you, through you, Warden. Has the county, like, reviewed or considered extending, like, vehicle life? Because there's a lot of fleet expenses every single year, and I'm just wondering if there's a possibility to review, or has it been reviewed?
Certainly, through the Warden to Counselor Gilvezzi, not in this budget cycle. It has not been considered. It has been considered in some areas of the county services in the past, based on certain circumstances at the time. So it's not something that cannot be considered for sure.
One more question through you, Warden. I know something that's becoming practice is, and I know I see it in my local budget in Tilsenberg, is a page, and I honestly haven't had time to open this binder yet because I'm still trying to read my other one. But there's a page where there's maybe discretionary spending, where staff might recommend, you know what? This would be something great to have, but we could get away without having it. And then it gives council an option to consider some items that could potentially be removed. Would county staff have, you know, thought of something like that? Or could they, in the future, if council came forward and asked for something like that, be able to provide that? Thank you.
Through the Warden to Counselor Gilvezzi, I can tell you, through the senior management team peer review process, we do go through a pretty rigorous review of what is being presented to council. Not unlike last year, this year was quite a challenge because a lot of the pressures and increases you'll see are, you know, to support essential services. And I think that we did a good job challenging each other. However, as we go through this exercise over the next coming weeks, you're certainly, that's what the process is for, is for you to bring through forward ideas, like, well, why is this so important? And then we can, you know, help prioritize, you know, what can and should not be in the budget, if that be the case.
Any other questions? At this point in the process, I'm sure there will be more. Counselor Martin.
Thank you, Warden Ryan. Moved by myself, seconded by Schaefer, resolved that the recommendations contained in the report, CS 2024-40, titled 2025 Business Plan and Budget, be adopted.
Is there any discussion? All is in favor? Opposed? That is carried. And 8.2.3, CS 2024-41, 2025 Oxford County Library Business Plan and Budget. And I didn't ask who was going to present that. So I'll say, is there anything, Lynn, that you would, Director Bougner, that you would like to highlight in that?
I don't have anything to add. Thanks.
Questions from council on the report? Counselor Gilvezzi.
Through you, Warden, I do have a question. So the recommendation is for it to be adopted, and I'm curious to why this couldn't be referred to the budget.
I think, correct me if I'm wrong here, but I think that is the recommendation in the report.
Okay.
I'm just checking.
I'm just want to make sure that what all this means is that it's going forward to the budget.
So the recommendation, and I believe you're the mover, says that, in the report says that the recommendation of the Oxford County Library Board dated October 15, 2024, that the Oxford, that the county council approved the draft 2024 County Library Business Plan and Budget to provide a levy of 5.744951, as adjusted for minor interdepartmental charges be referred to 2025 budget deliberations.
Okay, thank you. I think I've got it. Just looking, seeking clarification.
Counselor Gilvezzi then is the mover.
Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Tate, resolved that the recommendations contained in the report, CS 2024-41, titled 2025 Oxford County Library Business Plan and Budget, be adopted.
Is there any discussion? All is in favor? Opposed? That is carried. And 8.2.4, CS 2024-42, 2025 Court Security Grant Special Tax Levy. Director Bougner, is there anything you'd like to highlight there?
I have nothing further to add.
Questions from council? Counselor Tate.
Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Gilvezzi. Moved that, resolved that the recommendation contained in the report, CS 2024-42, titled 2025 Court Security Grant Special Tax Levy, be adopted.
Is there any discussion? All is in favor? Opposed? That is carried. And 8.2.5, CS 2024-43, 2025 Preliminary Assessment and Tax Analysis. Director Bougner, is there anything you'd like to highlight in that report?
I have nothing to add. Thank you.
Questions from council? Counselor Tate.
Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Gilvezzi. Resolved that the recommendation contained in the report, CS 2024-43, titled 2025 Preliminary Assessment and Tax Analysis, be adopted.
Is there any discussion? All is in favor? Opposed? That is carried. 8.2.6, CS 2024-44, Oak Park Special Services Internal Long-Term Debt Issue. Tilsenberg, Director Bougner, is there anything you'd like to highlight in that report?
I have nothing further. Thank you.
Questions from council on the report? Super effective and efficient. Counselor Gilvezzi.
Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Martin. Resolved that the recommendation contained in the report, CS 2024-44, titled Oak Park Special Services Internal Long-Term Debt Issue. Tilsenberg be adopted.
Is there any discussion? All is in favor? Opposed? That is carried. 8.3 Human Services, 8.3.1, HS 2024-12, Municipal Housing Facilities Agreement Amendment, 785 Southwood Way, Woodstock. Interim Director Smith, is there anything you'd like to highlight for council before I ask them for questions?
Nothing further to add. Thank you.
Questions from council? Counselor Martin.
Moved by myself and seconded by Counselor Schaefer, resolved that the recommendations contained in the report, HS 2024-12, titled Municipal Housing Facilities Agreement Amendment, 785 Southwood Way, Woodstock, be adopted.
Is there any discussion? I just want to say how happy I am to see us, you know, again, like, look outside the box of a thing that's happening anyway. And if I'm not mistaken, the dollars per unit here is a little bit lower than what we have seen more recently. So I just want to say thanks to staff for not saying, like, that's a done and dusted project, but keep looking for opportunities. As we had discussion earlier today, four units is four units that we didn't have before. The faster they're built, the better. Any other discussion? All is in favor? Opposed? That is carried. Unfinished business, the pending item list, and motions. And I'll give up the chair to the deputy warden again. Okay, we have a motion, Warden Ryan, 10.1, Warden Ryan.
Thank you, Deputy Warden Peterson. Moved by Ryan, seconded by Gilvezzi. Whereas the 2024 Business Plan and Budget Review Third Quarter states, that, quote, "The total estimated exemptions for 2024 are approximately 13.7 million, as illustrated in Table 1 compared to the final 2023 exemptions of just under 2.1 million of the 13.7 million forecast. Approximately 85% or 11.6 million is the estimated non-statutory exemptions, with the remaining 15% or 2.1 million representing the estimated statutory exemptions." And whereas development charge exemptions are required to be funded by sources of revenue other than development charges, placing the cost burden on all county taxpayers. And whereas, based on development charge exemptions projected in 2025, the draft budget includes an estimated 5.4 million or approximately 5.8% in the 2025 tax levy. And whereas, without the non-statutory exemptions, industrial developments would still receive statutory exemptions. And whereas, Oxford County residents are already experiencing consequences of the current rate of growth, such as homelessness, mental health supports, addiction supports, encampment responses, housing availability and attainability, lack of primary medical care, lack of adequate school spaces, growth pressure on green space and agricultural land. And whereas, non-statutory industrial development charge exemptions are incentivizing more of that growth and exacerbating those pressures and already inadequate services, therefore be it resolved that staff be directed to take all necessary steps to amend the development charge policy and bylaw at the earliest possible date to remove the non-statutory exemption related to industrial buildings, recognizing the statutory exemption for a maximum of 50% of the gross floor enlargement of the existing building. Will continue to apply and will allow for the funding provision for the non-statutory exemption to be removed from the draft 2025 budget. And further, that staff be directed to review the county's Community Improvement Plan, CIP, and the Area Municipal Community Improvement Plans and report back to council in the first quarter of 2025 regarding the use and effect of the current CIP policies in terms of supporting shared community development objectives and associated fiscal implications to assess ongoing and future effectiveness, and that this resolution be forwarded to all Oxford-area municipalities.
Point of order. I would like to, Chair's decision on whether this is a motion for reconsideration as the county has already, county council has already discussed this item during the term of council. And then following that decision, I'll have another, raise another issue. For clarification, it only pertains to the direction on bylaw, development charges, and not on the CIP program, as we've never discussed that.
Yeah, so with this, staff doesn't feel, and myself as well, that this is a reconsideration, that this is their, like, the way they can do their policy. So I feel it's okay.
Okay. The second one I'd like to raise is that this motion should be referred to budget as it does talk about mending the 2025 budget amounts. And that is in our procedural bylaw in 9.1.2, Council Review and Consideration of Annual Business Plans and Budgets. All amending motions shall be tabled in writing and duly signed as notice of motions to be debated at the budget meeting specifically identified for budget debate. Specifically, the line in question is, it will allow funding provision for the non-statutory exemption to be removed from the draft 2025 budget.
removed from the draft 2025 budget. Is that the, what you're?
That's correct. And my issue with that is that that is affecting, that is a budget motion that would have an effect on the budget, and our procedural bylaw states that those should be only debated at the most, the item beforehand, the meeting, at the specific meeting.
If I could, I would suggest that, first of all, every, every policy that we pass affects budget, but also that this does not direct to change the budget. It says will allow for the funding provision for the non-statutory exemption to be removed from the budget. This does not remove it, propose to remove it. It proposes actions that would allow council to remove it at budget deliberations.
So he could ask for amendment to that resolution if he wishes, right? Yeah, so as it's written, it doesn't, doesn't affect the budget directly. But are, would you like to put a amendment to that resolution on the floor?
I'm confused in what sense that would be. If it's the Chair's ruling that it stands, and that's the Chair's ruling, and I'm prepared to stand by that, it's just, that's.
Yeah, I personally believe with the term "will allow" that it's okay for me.
Thanks to Deputy Warden. So you will recognize, I think, a lot of the language in this is similar to the language in the previous motion that I brought with respect to growth, because I think the issues are the same, that our residents are experiencing. So if passed, this would allow council to take 4.2% off the tax levy right out of the gate. When you take growth off as well, that takes us from a 12.6, take off growth, take off this, down to 6.1. It would reduce the property tax burden by about $51 per property and one change.
Point of order, we're discussing the budget. The argument that I just made, that the Chair read, that it was not a budget motion, and now we're discussing the budget and what it would do to the budget. To me, that's a budget motion.
Yeah, I'll tend to agree with Counselor Petrie.
Certainly, some of our economic development officers in the county have expressed concerns about this. I would suggest that their concerns that a reduction in the amount of development charge exemptions could be, could slow industrial growth. I say could slow because I don't think it would stop it entirely. And it is absolutely the intention of my motion that it would slow that growth. The rate of industrial growth that we are experiencing is adding to the rate of population growth and demand for services, whether those services are traffic concerns that we hear about and the need for infrastructure to support that, et cetera, et cetera. Industrial growth creates service demands. So the DC exemptions may pay in the long run, in terms of increased industrial tax revenue. I think that in the long run, they definitely do pay more than residential. We know this to be true. The question is, that I do not think we have sufficient analysis on yet, is what rate do they return that on? What is the rate of return for our communities? Have we done that analysis? I'm open to that analysis being done, but until I have that in front of me that says that there is a reasonable rate of return, I think that I am not comfortable continuing to tax our residents to encourage and stimulate more growth, which this council has just expressed so much concern about the rate of already today. So the growth will happen anyway, but just slower, which I think is a good thing. As I said before, we are not handling that growth well. And I think it's irresponsible for us to tax people to encourage more growth that we've already agreed we are not handling well. I frankly, you know, think this is going to be a challenging issue for us going forward. As we heard in the report earlier today from Watson, this is an issue of growth and how it is funded, whether it's DCs, whether it's fees, whether it's taxation. Grants is, is not a thing that is going to go away for us. But I think that, again, to continue to tax residents to encourage growth that collectively we are not handling well is not responsible. I think one of the main concerns this council has expressed about the growth pressure that is directly our responsibility is level of property taxation. And I think this is, this would allow us to reduce that aspect of growth pressure.
Thank you. Any other questions on this? Sorry, I didn't see who come up. Counselor Acioli?
Thank you. Through you. I'm really torn with this. I do believe growth should pay for growth, no question. Problem I'm having is, I think earlier we talked about residential growth, which costs us all a lot of money without a real return. Industrial growth actually pays us as municipalities at a much higher rate without the expenses that a residential does. By slowing down our, our industrial commercial growth, I'm really fearful we're not going to see those kind of numbers coming forward anymore, and we're just going to see the population grow. So I'm really hesitant with this motion the way it is. Personally, I would have preferred to see at least a notice of motion to get more information, some considerations, some time before we actually vote on this today. I'm just not sure that our economic development teams would agree that this would be the right approach at all, and would ask for some input from them.
Okay, Counselor Gilvezzi, I'm gonna go to you next, because you were the second.
Thank you. I actually don't think that there's proof that it would slow industrial growth. And I think that especially Ingersoll and Woodstock being positioned on the 401 are always going to have pressures on industrial growth, because you're strategically located in a prime location. So I don't think that there's any evidence to suggest that it would cause a slowing down. And I do believe when we went through the DC process that there was input from the economic development officers. I mean, I know that mine and myself might not be completely aligned on this, but I said it when we were looking at DC charges, that residents shouldn't be subsidizing industry. Then the fact that we have CIP programs where communities might not even be realizing full taxation for 10 years, right? So we're subsidizing industry for, in many cases, 10 years. So I'm in full support of this motion. Thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna go Counselor Martin, and then Counselor Petrie.
Thank you, Deputy Warden. I'll completely support what Counselor Gilvezzi has said, that I think that, given the demand that we have seen for industrial growth in our region, I don't think that an exemption like this will completely slow the growth. I think growth that is necessary will find a way to pay. But in that gap between the time that infrastructure needs to be put in the ground and we actually see the industrial tax assessment, the municipal resident on their tax bill is shouldering that cost. And so I support, you know, non-statutory exemptions are leading to that. So I support this motion.
Okay, Counselor Petrie, and then Counselor Schaefer.
Thank you, Deputy Warden. Through you. I can't support the motion. I think that council just decided this, that we just had this debate in 2024 already, and the message, we need to provide clarity, much like the, the province has not provided clarity by bouncing around on policy developments, and now we're trying to do the same thing. I think that there is a discussion there. This is a much nuanced discussion here that needs to happen, where I think that we're jumping into this too fast, and that we're just going to go from one extreme to the next. I think it's a very nuanced subject that needs to be explored. I think there's opportunity to have discussions around CIP. I think there's opportunities to address around how we are funding our DC exemptions, and which ones, and which how, how we do that. To go from no exemptions to 100%, from exemptions to 100% exemptions is, and in my opinion, just to solve this year's budget problem, is not necessarily far-reaching policy, far-looking policy. And again, the mover has noted that they do not have enough information to know the outcome. And that's concerning to me, because as policymakers, we need to have the best information we can to try to move forward with no unpolicy moves. I get the budget challenges we're facing this year, but I think this is a short-sighted policy move that will have drastic consequences, and that there is much more nuanced moves that we can make policy-wise to address the concerns. We are not out of moves on this one by any means. There is, I'm certainly willing to have those discussions and look at where those, those challenges are coming from. Certainly, the vast majority of those challenges are coming from water, wastewater. And I'll be of the opinion that there is probably room to move on there on policy-wise about who's funding those. To be honest, it's Tilsonburg, Woodstock, and Ingersoll that are driving the majority of those costs. Woodstock, by the data, is 50%. Ingersoll's another 8 million, Tilsonburg 7 million. And the rest of the surrounding municipalities of Oxford are 4.5 million, with Tavistock being 2.5 in Norwich. And so there is that drastic change within our community, and we have water, water systems. I think that could be looked at, to be who's funding those correctly, and at what level. I think that our CIP program can be looked at. Right now, it matches county, area municipalities, that could be looked at. But, so I agree with that portion of the motion. We should be looking at those policies. But to absolutely go from sending the message out to our development community, there's shovels in the ground right now that have said, okay, we had a gentleman here from Tavistock that was, that was worried about, and then he had to go through hoops. Now, that's residential. I also think that we need to look at what our development, I think we have to look what our development charge study is incorporating. We have a variety of services in there that may or may not be needed that were included in there. We just have updated growth numbers. The problem with using outdated growth numbers as we did, because that's the best we had, is that they're outdated. And so it tends to go conservative, and it drives up DC charges, and then we collect too much revenue, or we show too much exemptions, as we did. So I think, I can't support this because I don't think it's 100% have enough information coming back from it to show that it's only going to have the effect that's wanted, and not other effects, and that I believe there's a lot of other conversations that could be had to try to solve the problem that we're seeing without this drastic of a step.
Thank you, Counselor Petrie. Counselor Schaefer.
Thank you, Deputy Warden. I think there's many reasons why developers would want to develop industrial properties in this area, the 401, the 403, reasonable tax rates, and a excellent workforce. I think this is more a nice-to-have rather than a need-to-have. I don't think we need to provide this type of, of support for something that we'd probably get anyway. Thank you.
Okay, Warden Ryan.
Yeah, just wanted to respond to Counselor Petrie's comment that I, that I said I don't have enough information. I agree that we don't. But my point was, in fact, that we didn't have enough to justify it at the time we gave the exemptions. If we don't have enough now, then it equally goes that we didn't have enough then. And my point was that I would, not having the, the analysis to justify it, I would not want to tax people for something that I don't have the, the analysis to justify. If that constitutes a mistake on my part, then I'm fully willing to put my hand up and say, I made a mistake. But if we did, let's undo it. And to the point that, that, you know, we're flip-flopping as the province does, I 100% agree. I don't like that at all. Part of the reason we're being forced to flip-flop is because of the province's flip-flops around housing growth and, and planning changes. Yeah.
Okay, Counselor Tate.
Excuse me, through the chair. I fully support the motion. I agree with comments from Counselor Martin and Gilvezzi. I don't think it will stop people from coming to Oxford County to build, because it's not that much of an increase at Woodstock. We did have zero, now it's 2%. When you look at the cost of land going the other way, you're looking at a million dollars an acre. It's only 500,000 here. So regardless, if we've got DC charges, I don't think it's going to stop anybody, and we're situated in a good place. And I, economically, we need it in this county.
Thank you. Counselor Petrie.
If I may, one of the nuances that I want to stress to people is that DC charges are not, are not financeable. Land is. And so when we have housing being built, that's charges can easily be, the housing gets built to get sold. Industrial buildings are 95% by end users. There's a real problem there for somebody. I give the example in, when we had this discussion of VW, if it came here, that plant, that would have been $91 million in DC charges that are not financeable through the build of that, that item. We need to look at these policy things and the realities of the situation. I heard the argument that, you know, residential shouldn't be subsidizing industrial. What about industrial subsidizing residential in taxes? That's okay. These are our largest employers, our assessment people. There needs to be balance, and there needs to be a reality of, these are true situations, and how do we have policies that address those to make sure that if we do charge DCs or we don't charge DCs, we need the funding as we get. How do we get that information in to be able to say, hey, we're going to get the amount of revenue that we need? Because I'm going to tell you right now, the problem is, you can say, we're going to get $5.8 million, but that may not necessarily be the case anymore. That's not, that's not one-to-one. And so I can't support it, because I'm not 100% sure that's going to happen.
Okay, anybody else? Counselor Gilvezzi.
Thank you, through you, Deputy Warden. Just one final comment. If, if the province located a mega site in Oxford, how would the residents pay for $91 million in diverted DC funds? I mean, to me, it's a scary thought. Thank you.
Counselor Tate.
Yeah, through the chair, just final thought, too, on the comment. So residential doesn't pay its way. The only way that, and I don't think residential should be subsidizing industrial. So, and that's what's going on with the taxes, so I fully support the motion. And as for the comment on the water rates, ours are up, but our taxpayers are paying for them in Woodstock. Oxford County's not paying for them. Woodstock is paying for them.
Okay, anybody else?
No. I will support the motion. I, I've always been a, growth should pay for, for growth. And I know, personally, for me, I agree with Counselor Schaefer's comment, that I think they'll, I think they'll come here anyway. I know, I know, just in our area alone, the developer said, hey, we're going to be giving you this many millions of development charges when we come there. So they were prepared to do it. to do it. So for that, I will support it. So, any other comments?
Okay. Oh, Counselor Ryan.
I asked for a recorded vote.
Okay.
And Counselor Martin?
Yes.
Counselor Petrie?
No.
Counselor Schaefer?
Yes.
Counselor Tate?
Yes.
Warden Ryan?
Yes.
Counselor Palmer?
Yes.
Counselor Gilvezzi?
Yes.
Counselor Mayberry?
Yes.
Counselor Acioni?
Yes.
And that is carried. You're in the chair, right? You have to vote? Okay, so yeah, you're on here on the list.
Yes.
Okay, yeah, so that's nine to one. It's carried.
Okay, that's carried. I'll just, I'll just carry on for half a second. We got no notice of motions, inquiries, and let's go for lunch.
All right, 12:45. We will get back to business. We've been incredibly effective and efficient, but we still have some work to do. Item 13, closed session. Counselor Mayberry.
Thank you, Ward. And moved by myself, second by counsel, peremptory that council rights go into closed session to consider reports number HR 202404, CS 202445, CS 202446, PW 202443, WDFL 202408, and Pile on Number 6678 2024 regarding labor relations or employee negotiations. Personal matters of both identifiable individual, including county or local board employees, and a position plan, procedure, criteria, or instruction to be applied to any negotiations carried on or to be carried on by or on behalf of the municipality or local board.
Is there any discussion? All those opposed, that is carried, and we are in closing. Just a reminder, leave your phones in here. All right, 12:45. We will get back to business. We've been incredibly effective and efficient, but we still have some work to do. Item 13, closed session. Counselor Mayberry.
Who's doing this today? I can't remember, Matt told me it was me. Oh, there we go. All right, we are back from closed at 2:22. Consideration of matters arising from closed session. Is it Deputy Warden?
Moved by Mayberry, seconded by Deputy Warden Peterson, resolved the recommendation contained in report HR Close Session 2024-04 be adopted.
Is there any discussion? All is in favor? Opposed? That is carried. Counselor Palmer.
Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Peterson, resolved that the recommendation contained in report CS bracket CS 2024-45 be adopted.
Is there any discussion? All is in favor? Opposed? That is carried. Counselor Schaefer.
Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Martin, resolve the recommendations contained in report CS CS 24-46 be adopted.
Is there any discussion? All is in favor? Opposed? That is carried. Counselor Petrie.
Thank you, Warden, through you. Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Martin, resolved that the recommendation contained in report PWCS 2024-43 be adopted.
Is there any discussion? All is in favor? Opposed? That is carried. Counselor Martin.
Thank you. Moved by Martin, seconded by Gilvasey, resolve that the recommendations contained in report WDFL Close Session 2024-08 be adopted as amended.
Is there any discussion? All is in favor? Opposed? That is carried. And bylaws, Counselor Palmer.
Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Petrie, resolved that the following bylaws be read as a first and second time, 6675 through 2024 and 6679 to 2024 inclusive.
Is there any discussion? All is in favor? Opposed? That is carried. And Counselor Palmer.
Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Petrie, resolved that the following bylaws be given a third and final reading, 6675 to 2024 and 6679 to 2024 inclusive.
Is there any discussion? All is in favor? Opposed? That is carried. And Deputy Warden Peterson.
We've still got five minutes. Moved by Peterson, seconded by Counselor Petrie, resolve that council meeting of November 13, 2024 be adjourned until November 20, 2024, special meeting of council at 9:30 a.m.
Is there any discussion? All is in favor? Opposed? That is carried. And we are...